Just approving the result, we're not approving the layout of any drawings on a map. We're just approving, so what may end up being built is not necessarily what we see on that diagram. Correct? Alright, so that's, I think it's good for everybody to hear. And my biggest concern when I was on media, I'm a media company committee and when I was on the planning board, is we are well-inseptic and we don't want to have overdeveloped, we don't want to have too much impervious surface. We'll make sure that we have adequate infiltration of the rainwater so that our wells continue to work and we don't overcross the neighbors' wells itself, so that'd be my biggest concern, but this is completely complex. This is the right place to put commercials, on the commercial.
Mr. Crawford, can I get you to come over here and give the sign-in sheet?
Sure.
Thank you. Alright, if you're going to make the applicant address at the conference, the more we listen to them. Okay, Mr. Falconer, would you like to set up with us and answer these questions?
Yeah, so I wasn't texting my friends, I was taking notes on it.
We wouldn't have known.
I have notes here, so Mr. Brady came up and he spoke last time and he discussed access, which is not part of the process we have here, but as Justin will do too, we did a traffic study, we sent it to NCTOT who was actually kind of nice in this regard, you know, the intersection's not as dangerous as some of them they deal with in bigger streets. But from an access standpoint, we're eliminating three access points, two for the bank that I own, one on 220, and we're pushing the 220 access as far north as we can get, as far away from the intersection, which is in the quarters of NCTOT standards. The access point on 150 is as far east as we can get. So from a traffic standpoint, I think the situation's going to be better, we're going to extend the left turn lane going westbound on 150 to 220, so the, and we'll add a right turn lane where the bank is there. So from an access point, we're not 100% above that, but it'll be better than it is now. There'll be more traffic here, but not, you know, it's not going to go by more than 5% or 6% in terms of overall volume. So going down his list, Brett and Ron from Elmer's, I've met with folks over there. I completely understand their concerns, they're the most impacted by anybody in the community. And unfortunately, somebody's going to be impacted by something all the time. I will say that, and I think Justin will say, that when we go through the site plan process, there's certain conditions and codes that will, it says zero light runoff, so they'll do a footprint study, there won't be any cliff. So we'll have that, stormwater, Justin's talked about it a lot, it'll be a zero runoff, it'll probably be better than it is now. We'll have stormwater retention in different areas, so I think the noise pollution is always a consideration. We talked about the berm. I know that, you know, in my experience, the fences, like the one they put on 220, don't really work that much because it reverberates off the fence, it just goes over the top of it, it's hard to give it sound. So we'll do a berm, we'll do a fence, we'll do some natural plans, but it's never going to be 100% effective in terms of sound, because the sound just goes where it's going to go. And Ron mentioned a 100-foot buffer, and I'm not opposed to increasing the buffer from the original 50 feet. I just would like to have the ability, and I don't have it now, to have a distance between where I need the land. You know, so I can't say I need 100 feet today because I don't know if that's going to impair the project. So Justin, do you have any thought on that, how we could maybe couch that? I mean, if I'm not using land, I don't care, but if it's...
I would say leave it at minimum, but make an attempt to maximize as much as possible of the site.
Okay, but you understand that if I can't get the project to build in the space that I have there...
Yeah, I would handicap yourself a little 50, but if you can get more, then certainly get more.
Yeah, I'll absolutely consider that. So, and they also mentioned, I think Ron mentioned, the well water. What I'm trying to do is cut down the issues one at a time. And I think with the water, I've talked with the town manager about some type of public water system that may come in the future. I would prefer to have public water than have a well system. And I've offered to contribute what it would cost me to do a well system to the city of Summerfield to help the water come here. I will say, just in general, I know I've heard from four meetings here, that people are opposed to septic sewer systems and water as a way of preventing development. And that's really not the standard way to do that, the way of preventing development is through zoning and planning. And I think sewer and water are public health issues, you know. I'd rather have city sewer and city water and have one acre zoning than have one acre zoning without them, you know. So it's really, you know, I don't think you're going to get apartment complexes up there, apartment complexes, because you'd have to improve that. So I'm going to try to make city water, I don't think city sewer is likely to happen in the next, you know, five years to this site, but we're planning on doing a what's called a packaged sewage plant, which means you treat it and then discharge it into the ground. It won't discharge it to the stream at all. So we're addressing every concern that the context of the state can handle. So Andrew said about 2:00 AM delivery. You know, I don't think, and my brochure, you know, those that reminded me that Food Line opens at 6:00, right, across the street, and I don't think they're going to be open before 6:00. Obviously, everybody takes deliveries and the big question mark is when the garbage truck coming, you know, they come out of the command. I can't really control that. But, you know, when you take all the buffers into consideration, everything else, I don't think there's going to be a lot of noise impact because they're already on 220 already, so you have, you know, a lot of that stuff there already. And I completely understand their concern about that, I really do, I'll do everything I can to help that. Rhonda mentioned purchase, housing, and traffic, and she had a very emotional response in the last meeting, and, you know, some issues they had there. I believe that the traffic will be better in the future with the project built up. So I'll leave it at that, and the purchase, really, you know, the packaged sewage plant, it kind of lessens that. And somebody else said, we use the same system for the residential and commercial, and the answer's yes. You know, we're going to save $20,000 per house to do the system residential, so I think that works, do it combined. And I think you should encourage that with everybody considering, to try to get more technology and have less negative impacts from sewer. So still, I've talked about the comp plan, variety of choices. We don't have duplexes in townhomes, what we have on the plan there is by code, a cluster system. So the R3 zoning, R30 zoning with a large X amount of houses, we just took those X and put it in a smaller box to get out more open space. And I think, and that helps with the power grid, it helps with drainage, it helps with the noise, it helps with everything. So we're not adding more units, we're not putting 80, 40 units in there, I think the number's more in the 40s than anything else. So, and I don't have any intention of selling, I've got four great kids and they're going to go to college. So that's, you know, that's, I'm not, I don't sell anything, I typically don't sell anything. And Mr. Crawford said the site plan's conceptual right now, it is absolutely conceptual, but it meets, well, it checks, it's not a, what I call it, a sketch plan, it's an engineer plan that has dimensions on it, has partners based on it, has a white building footprint on there, and the alma mater's there, so it'll be very much like what we see there. And Justin's on with the corridor plan and the grand area plan, it'll be the nicest project in the area, it'll be a lot nicer than Oak Ridge and Harris Teeters out here. Do you have any other questions we have to answer?
Well, now's the time, I guess. My name, they're telling me I need to close the public comments section of this hearing, so...
Is there a way, is there a way for me to rebut, just one statement that you made to clarify to you guys?
I'm afraid, everybody's been talking for three minutes, sir, I'm afraid not.
Well, he should have had three minutes, like everybody else did, why can't this gentleman here rebut it just for a second?
So there's no, you know, talking to the applicant, just sleep.
I'm here, dude.
I'm out here. Alright, we're going to close, can you speak to the developer afterwards, sir?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make motion that we close the public hearings for
Is there a second? Second. Second by who? He. Any discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor are closing public comments section of the public hearing on the resounding. RZ02-2025, signify the same night.
Aye.
All those opposed, this public hearing is now closed. Alright, did any of y'all, the board members, have any questions for Mr. Falconer? I do.
I did too.
Okay.
You're the mayor.
Alright, the, the traffic's obviously going to be a lot more than what's there already, especially what I hear is coming, what's coming. Is there any plan to, I don't see it anywhere, but is there a plan to widen the roads or a turn lane or any of that?
Justin, do you have any off-site stuff that I sent you?
So the traffic impact analysis, it looks like...
I think there's another site plan that has what we proposed to DOT somewhere, I don't have it registered.
Would that be your responsibility, or are you leaving that to the DOT, or is that something?
DOT doesn't pay for anything, but I'm on it.
So that's not the way it works?
It's not that way.
That would be your...
Yeah, and I will do anything that I can, and usually the limitation's right away acquisition, you know. If there's a right way there, it's my property, it's my property, it's the DOT's property, it's the DOT's. But I do think there was anything, I'm doing this, talking about now with, you know, the same issues. I don't think there's anything that's part of it from being built and then being built to the DOT standards.
Do you have a question?
Yes, sir. So my questions are, first of all, I appreciate you being open to questions. I know I had called planning director, I talked to Twig, and then sorry, our town manager, and then I talked to yourself. So I really appreciate your time and openness to do that. One of my questions was, and this was just purely to understand more than take it off or not take it off, the educational facilities, you had agreed to take off community college, a four-year college on campus housing that left a vocational or trade school. I can see where that could be something small, like armed forces, training facilities, something small, or recruitment, that I can also see that is really large, I didn't know whether it's all processable.
Well, you know, so this project is 100,000 square feet at the top end with a 44, 45, 46 thousand foot grocer, so at least 50,000 square feet of shop space. If you take out your restaurant, nail salon, you know, Chinese restaurant, Mexican restaurant, pizzeria, there's really not much that's left over, and I would imagine that some of the stuff that's off the street will be like Novant Health, that type of thing. I don't have any, you know, I've never leased to a trade school ever, because there's more office uses. I don't know how that restriction might affect something like Novant Health that might do, you know, teaching, stuff like that. So I'm not at all wanting to do anything that's controversial on this, because I don't need to, but I just don't know how limiting something like that would limit somebody that you like, you know what I mean? So I don't, you know, we're going to have, this is just like the first quarter of this deal. I don't want to do anything that you don't want to do. So I'm happy to take away anything that you think is for noxious use, we did about a dozen of them. Actually, I went to Justin and took off a 30, took him 10 minutes to read. I'm happy to look at it, I just don't want to have unintended consequences of something the community might want by taking on something off the list.
Yeah, I just wanted to understand your thought process, but one thing I would like you to possibly consider taking off, and I do love the police, my daughter's a policeman in South Carolina, so please, don't think I'm against the police at all. I understand the difference between a police substation and an actual police station, and I was wondering if we could just...
You can take a whole one, you know, I don't think...
Off the police station, just the one.
I don't think there's enough part right there that we need substation, that's kind of what we have on the Florida substation. You can take a whole one.
Okay, alright, thank you. I'm just, could we take the police station?
Police station.
Yeah, just the police station. The other thing was, I had asked questions about commercial parking because I didn't understand that. I know that per your, your businesses, you have had X number of parking spaces, and that's a given, I understand that. But as far as a commercial parking lot, could you just explain to everyone, how you explain that to me, please?
Yeah, sure, so we're not intending to have a commercial parking lot, like you pay for parking or a parking lot. Our parking is necessary for tenants and the employees and the customers. To the extent that we don't even allow people to, you know, the mayor parks his car there and he's left for two weeks, you know, he finds it in the tow truck there, because we need a parking space. We have, we have that situation, I have a property owner at an airport where there's a parking lot, but they don't pay. And just kidding, you can have a good day. But, you know, we're not having, you can take off commercial parking lot on there, I just don't know if you take off commercial parking lot, whether it's a commercial project with this parking on it, it's a contradiction.
They're different.
Okay.
This would be like a parking garage or parking lot or something like that.
That's not part of our, you know, part of our deal. You know, as much as this is a big important decision for the city of Summerfield, it's relatively small or grocery anchor project. It's not a big, you know, it's not even as big as Oak Ridge, you know, there, it's probably 30, 40% less than Oak Ridge project.
Okay, and then I think one more, it was under vehicle sales and services light, and it's trucking, utility, trailer rental, and leasing light. So I'm envisioning that being like a dual budget dealership or rental.
Justin, can you paraphrase what you think that is?
So that would be like the places where they have the trailers saying out for sale.
I know you're all trailers, so you can make your own.
Thank you. And that off. Yeah, thank you.
Is I good?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor, for your recap. You're okay with Mr. Brady's questions of removing the police station, commercial parking, and trucking and utility trailer rental?
Yes.
And what about, in spirit, it means so flexible, thank you so much. What about in the waste-related services, recycling drop-off station? Is that something that...
Oh yeah, I'd love to take that out.
We would love to take that out.
And you know what's even better, take off the clothing drop-off stations, because there's, you know, that's just a, it's a beehive for code enforcement to come after. Nobody puts this up in the box.
The recycling drop-off station here, okay?
Yeah, exactly. Nobody puts it in the box, they always think that, you know, it's closed up.
And to, just to summarize, I think what you said earlier, that you're adding to your additional development conditions is a 50-foot undisturbed vegetable, sorry, vegetative buffer along with an eight-foot tall wooden privacy fence on top of an earth burner?
Yes, that's right. I think the neighbors wanted a non-wooden fence because of the way that the wood would deteriorate over time, we had that conversation. The code does not allow PVC or plastic, so that would mean it'd be some kind of stone fence. I'm not sure what the community wants, I don't think they want stone or wood, I think they wanted something, you know, that's more durable than that. But we can figure that out, I don't, do we have to just say fence right now and not say what?
You can say fence or wall, because the scene quarter of it is going to have its own requirements, it's probably going to be either wood or brick or stone.
Okay.
And do you mind if I follow up to that question, Drew?
Yeah, is it okay to then remove this eight-foot tall privacy fence, just remove wooden out?
Yeah, I think it would work without, because I don't think the community wants it, because it's going to be unsightly within three, four years.
Mr. Mayor?
I was just going to say, I really was talking about the berm and the buffer and the fence, I think somebody's going to want the fence higher. Is there anything you do with the fence?
Well, I don't, you know, without a topographic map and some elevations and even some 3D imaging, I don't know what it's going to look like, you know. I'd say this, but it might be really ugly if you built a 12-foot fence on top of a 10-foot berm and it was just sitting there, you know, I don't know how that's going to look. If I were doing this just myself, I would do a field decision in the field, you know, and say, okay, here's how this looks. Build a berm, you know, just walk out there, see where the fence should be, it should be eight feet, 10 feet, 6 feet, or whatever. As far as the zoning is concerned, I think that you just leave it with berm, fence, and then, and we're working there. Because I'm happy to go back and meet the property owners during construction, and you just, here's a berm, here's the fence, you want the fence on this side of the berm, this side of the berm, on top of the berm. Because when you go on site, it's really, it's uncertain as to how the berm and the fence are going to help the situation, if that makes sense. I know that it, from a first floor, and they mentioned third floor view, you know, you're not, you're going to see over that berm, you know, in the winter months, in the summer months it'll probably be a bit of vegetation, you won't see through that. But in the winter months, I don't know how it's going to affect it, so I think it's better just to leave it as it is and then just work with the community after the fact. Because again, this is the first quarter of the game, we'll be back to this building, you know, a bunch of times coming in the vision. So we go through the site plan process, we might have a more detailed engineering and have the berm placed in a certain spot, and then say the berm goes from, say, 642 above sea level to 650, and then the fence goes from 650 to 658, and you can actually, you know, do like the Vanderbilt still, just put a stick out there and see where, how it falls, you know. So we could get down to that granular level, but I don't think we can do that here now.
And as we have those continual issue with the site plans and things like that, we'll have more meetings, right?
So there will be a planning board meeting as well as an informational meeting. It does not come back to council for site plan approval, but planning board would have another shot at it. The, if I could recommend something, I think Green Giant, Harper Beatle would probably be one of your best friends for noise light control. It's fast-growing, it's evergreen, and it's wide, and would protect the area.
Shaded areas?
Shaded areas.
Can you send me email out, I think that's my backyard, my neighbors. I can't get any grown chairs.
Does it help, yeah, follow up with that? Just to make sure the orders were clear. And that we're on the same page. A 50-foot undisturbed vegetative buffer along with an eight-foot tall privacy fence on top of earth burn?
Yes.
Mayor, could address our planner, sorry, confirm what I've read and think what I've heard is that the planning board has unanimous approval on this, the town planning staff has approval. It's been a DOT traffic impact analysis, a US Fish and Wildlife Service review, zones, has a surface water and wetland review?
Correct.
I'm assuming that when you do your site plan, or you're not going to cut, you're not going to later and just cut everything, you don't leave whatever trees you believe in.
That's right.
Mr. Clay, Mr. Clay, are you done?
Oh, yeah.
We're not in the closing stage yet, Mr. Dog, do you have any questions?
I do.
There we go.
So regarding trees, you know, I, I used to build, you know, just small retail projects that I didn't have to worry about trees, and I built a couple of projects in Auburn, Alabama, that were 11 and 27 acres, and I said, I want to save this tree and that tree, and the engineer said, well, you can't, because the ground's going to be four feet higher, four feet lower. So in a big project like this, the trees within the disturbed area will likely have to go because of elevation changes. I mean, you might be able to save a tree or two if they were called, in Charlotte they call them legacy trees, they're used to bear. So we will map them out, the survey will map them out, and if there's an elevation, if it's possible, Justin, we will save trees in the disturbed area. In the undisturbed area where the neighbors are, there's going to be no trees taking that whatsoever, so that will be undisturbed. And I would say, just off the top of my head, I think 30%, 32% of this site will be undisturbed. So you're talking about most of the stuff that's along the residential area and all the stuff that's along the wetlands will be undisturbed, completely undisturbed.
And that's what I mean, I knew in the building, the building footprint, it was not going to be a tree.
So people say I want to save that tree, you know, if the road's here and the tree base is here, it's not going to happen.
The other is, you talk about runoff, controlling the runoff at all, about all, the runoff can't change direction, you can't add any more runoff, it all has to be controlled, it has to stay in the same, in the same flow, is where it was, am I correct on that?
Well, it can be less, you know.
It can be less, can't be more, can't be more.
And it'll probably be less, because it'll probably, you know, the retention ponds will probably be to the east as opposed to be to the north because of the stream and the residences, so I don't think it's going to be, it can't be more than, and Justin's not going to let it more. Once he's supported this project, he's, he's an expert here, he'll go very quickly, and he's going to hold it still, I know that.
Retention ponds are underground stores, like a...
No, it'd be, it'd be retention ponds, usually they're open air. And typically, in a project like this, it'll be more than one. You'll have someone on the commercial side, someone on the residential side, you'll have, you know, someone that's setback, it's all over the place. That's something that's too big a term.
Now, Mr. Falconer, are you going back around, or are you starting in with Mr. Falconer?
You were just talking about the runoff, as far as the stormwater system goes, how long is it, is it like a 10-year system or what is that?
What, in terms of a 10-year storm system?
Yeah, you know, is there a year?
No, Justin, is it a 50-year floodplain or what's the number?
I think it depends on the watershed, but maybe he has built a lake, it's probably 10 that he would design to.
So what does that mean, after 10?
So it's, it's based on a 10-year storm that was the state has listed as...
Justin, do you know what the levels are? I know there's 100-year, 500-year, is there 10, 20, 50?
There's 10, 50, 100, and 500, and 1,000.
Do you all know what that means? For the 10 and 15?
It basically means the worst storm you would have every 10 years, you have to build a system for the worst storm ever.
It's probability equation, so it's the probability of a 10-year storm that occurring in a one-year period, basically is not consistent. But basically, open range channels have to be based on 100-year storms, and closed systems, which is likely what this will be, has to be a 10-year storm.
I didn't quite understand all of that, that's why I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, yeah, so basically, it's how large and expensive the storm system's going to be. If you build it for a 500-year floodplain, you'd probably take the whole site, you know, to build that. That's like what happened up in Nashville last year, you know, it's a 500-year flood. Now, it's, you know, this concept last time was 10-year enough, and I don't know, you know, the difference between 10 and 50. I do know that the engineers design it's code, and it will probably be less effect on the area and more. So that's, you know, it's not in my expertise to really talk about a storm, something like that.
But you're building this for a 10-year?
That's correct, yeah.
If it's an open system, it has to be designed with 100, or if you ask it a 401, permanent, Army Corps permanent, or if they're stream bumpers.
I want to say right in the Army Corps.
Lloyd doesn't like to play these games.
Yeah, but I mean, the county, the county's right, is going to look at the smart plan.
We look at it.
Okay, you look at it.
Tim, Tim's all... So it has to be...
Because we don't even know what the actual impervious area is, we don't know what the runoff's going to, what kind of runoff we're going to create, because we didn't know how big the buildings are, how big the parking lot is. We could add some impervious parking area if that was, you know, helpful, but that doesn't really wear that well, so. I mean, there's a lot of stuff we could get into, but, you know, we're not at that stage yet.
Isn't that like a backdoor cap shield, right, and once this is done, it goes to somebody else? I said, isn't that like a backdoor cap shield, so as soon as this is done, it goes to somebody else?
No, 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 I'm the only guy in my company that can talk about this and write the check, so, you know, I'm going to be here the whole, the whole way, you know. And I have the institutional knowledge of this project, you know, I walk the site every, you know, three months, and I'm pretty well-first in the site, I just don't know the engineering aspects of it, I don't know the math, because nobody's done that calculation, if that makes sense.
Now, I appreciate it, it seems like you've really corresponded a lot with folks here.
Yeah, yeah, and Justin's been at least three hundred emails for me.
And you can see this, that Summerfield's a lot different than other places, a lot of folks move here because they want the peace and the quiet and the tranquility, and the world feels very protective over that.
Yeah, and I, you know, I contacted the mayor at the time that Summerfield Park came up, because I was concerned about them putting, you know, a grocery anchor center on, I guess that's 150 west of 220, and it's a two-lane road, and I didn't think that was appropriate, you know. And I'm a developer with concerns like that, because when you become a homeowner, you take over your developer hat, but I'll say this, two things. One is, this is really the best place for it, you know, I've been doing this for a long, long time. This is the best and only place for grocery anchor center in Summerfield. And two is, my experience with Summerfield residents and the planning board in particular was very favorable. You know, people gave really good comments, I mean, these are really legitimate comments about noise pollution and sewer water issues. comments about noise pollution and sewer water issues, and we just trust them, you know, I, I think, I think all the reputation, I didn't see any of that, you know, the negative reputation, I think, you know, both this community and the elected officials representing the community were very cordial.
Thank you, I'll hand it to you.
I know Ms. Robinson most likely has some questions.
Actually, no, I feel like you really got it all, and I'm thankful that you worked with that, listen, so much.
It was first for me, to take so long with the site with residents, but, but I think that their concerns were very legitimate, you know, they're, they're the ones most impacted, and unfortunately, everybody's impacted, somebody, somewhere, on something, but we'll mitigate them as best we can, and even to the, to the point that I don't have to legally, I'll still go out there, because I want to, you know, I want to, you know, be part of the community and, and listen to them, the whole way from, from this point forward.
Everybody set aside?
Aye.
Yeah, some more. Mayor, Justin, I'm planning, I want to confirm too, again, what I've heard, what I've read, that this resoning would comply with the senior corridor opening apartments?
Yes, and I was actually gonna mention, as far as permitted uses, the senior corridor overlay says a requirement, all uses of the underlying basements are permitted, with the exception of any that are excluded as part of the conditional zoning, except for manufactured housing, outdoor storage, outside processing or assembly operations, outdoor advertising, and commercial fleet, truck, trailer, parking, so there's an added layer of protection in the senior corridor. And that will apply also to signage, walls and fencing, parking areas, all those are covered in the senior corridor, so I don't have to comply with all of those in addition to...
That's very big, yeah. And this commercial development and mixed use complies with our comping?
That's correct.
And this resoning lines, if there are master plan, like many commercial projects, we locate at the major exceptions?
That's correct, sure.
Mr. Cawley, I, I apologize for attempting to invest in our community, here to our, and invite our EDO contact, without requesting or leading into some major text in the, I appreciate your tremendous work with the citizens, work with the council.
Is everybody done? Everybody, Mr. Dogg?
I'm good.
We're gonna, all underway, motion, if you're ready to hear more.
I do have a question, do we want you to recite all of the voluntary prohibited public uses?
You did not, you could say as a memorandum in the staff report, and if you want to include the planning board's conditions, you can mention those added conditions to the ones he offered, and then if council has additional conditions beyond that, mention those as well, so I would do it kind of like a three-part.
A three-part?
Yeah. So you could do the developer imposed, self-imposed conditions as a memorandum in the staff report, in addition to the planning board's conditions that were approved as part of the planning board's motion, you could keep it gentle, because we've got that on record, and then you could also list your individual conditions beyond that.
Which is the thing to be talked about?
Yes.
What was the second thing you gave?
So the planning board conditions says, a memorandum during the, during the planning board's hearing.
Okay, so do we have a list, do we have a list group somewhere that we can...
I have it.
So we want to include the planning board conditions, too?
The first would be self-imposed developer conditions, that would be use conditions, and then second would be the planning board's conditions, and we're out of here with the planning board hearing.
Yeah, she just answered her vapor, and there was additional things on there. Because you have to repeat more things, so you have to...
Yeah, it's a whole, it's a whole thing.
You have to stay consistent. I've gotta, I've gotta say the same thing he's saying, so first of all, you get self-imposed developer conditions? Correct. Planning board conditions? Correct. What else? And then the council imposed conditions at this hearing.
All right, at this time, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion...
Yes, sir.
To approve RZ 02-2025, request to use zone plus minus 21.44 acres of property located at 2604 US 220, 4622 US 220, 1510 North Carolina 150 west, 1508 North Carolina 150 west, 20 North Carolina 150 west, and 1428 North Carolina 150 west, from RS 30 residential to CZBN additional business, Gilbert County tax parcel number 146174, 145999, 146000, 14601, and a 13.51 acre portion of number 145995, with the following conditions of including the self-imposed developer conditions...
As a memorandum in the staff report.
As a memorandum in the staff report, also the following planning board conditions, and lastly, with the council imposed conditions of no police station, no commercial parking lot, no trucking, utility trailer, trailer rental leasing, no recycling drop-off station, and include a 50-foot undisturbed vegetative bumper along with an eight-foot tall privacy fence, which now includes on top of an earth berm.
All right, Mr. Clay, can you parlay everything after commercial parking lot, I missed two or three of them.
There was no police station, no commercial parking lot, no trucking, utility, trailer rental leasing, no recycling drop-off station, and we included the earth berm.
And when you said planning board conditions, I don't know if those are also a memorandum in the staff report.
I'd like to make a little amendment to add to the planning board conditions and also a memorandum in the site report.
And then one more thing, you guys say that reasonable to us, that consistent?
I've got that, you know, the...
Maybe she will?
Yeah, the subject is in the public interest and reasonable, given that it is near a pre-existing commercial development area or local to note, it is consistent with the GDO or commercial driver, and it's consistent with the Summerfield comprehensive plan.
I accept the council and Hamilton's statement.
Would that be sufficient?
Yeah. And any other, is there a say?
I'm gonna second that.
I think Mr. Mayne, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of Mr. Clay's motion, signify the same I.
Aye.
All those opposed, the record will show that this resoning was approved unanimously. Thank you. We need to move on to six eight. Emergency service report? Okay. You want to take it? I made a motion.
I'll make a motion that if you said for five minutes.
Mr. Mayne has made a motion to reset for five minutes, is there a say? Well, Mr. Hamilton and Mr. Mayne have said it, all may need discussion, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, we are now in the term for five minutes.